All right, we'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Owen, you ready?
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. And please note, due to a technical issue, you won't have access to review the television tonight, but when we have somebody on Zoom later, we'll have audio with them. So you'll be able to communicate with them. But unfortunately, your view is not possible tonight.
Great, thank you. We have nothing to report out on closed session. Does anyone have any conflict of interest declarations? Seeing none, any changes or deletions to the agenda? David or Kevin?
No changes.
Thank you. Moving into B, public comments. Any person wishing to speak in person on an item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do we have anyone in the audience who'd like to make a public comment? Seeing none. Do we have any? We have two written comments that were sent in. Do we have to read either of these into the record? They're attached to the agenda. All right, we will move on to the student liaison report. Keiko was not able to be here tonight because she is in a track meet, I believe. So she sent in her report, and I will read it as follows. For the past few weeks, the Cloverdale Unified School District has had fun celebrating the past major holidays. The elementary school celebrated Dia de los Muertos on, oh, I'm sorry, from October 28th to November 1st, where students were given the opportunity to bring in offerings to the library and honor their loved ones who had passed. They also got to enjoy a movie night held in a city park featuring the 2017 Disney Pixar movie, Coco. The middle school had a parade on Halloween Day from 9:45 to 10:00. Both students and parents were allowed to participate. Also for the middle school, a fundraiser has started from early to mid-November. Students were given a catalog of snacks, candles, and other gifts to take home and to buy from. All funds will be supporting the school. For the high school, students got to enjoy their spirit week leading up to Thursday's Halloween. Monday was Twin Day, Tuesday was Halloween attire, Wednesday was Pink Out, where students were tasked to wear all pink, and finally Halloween with everyone wearing their costumes. A rally was also thrown with many costume contests and prizes. No school was given the next day. Also at the high school, in honor of Dia de los Muertos, students from all Spanish classes celebrated by making and bringing their own altar or contributing to the communal altar. The floral design class supplied their marigold flowers. Lastly, no school was given this Monday in observance of Veterans' Day. That is end of her report. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move into D, proclamations. D1 is Native American Heritage Month. And Councilmember Morganstern, you would like to read it?
A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale declaring November 2024 Native American Heritage Month in Cloverdale. Whereas Native American Heritage Month is a time to celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Native Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas the first American Indian Day in the state was declared on the second Saturday in May 1916 by the Governor of New York, and whereas what started at the turn of the century as an effort to gain a day of recognition for the significant contributions the first Americans made to the establishment and growth of the U.S. has resulted in a whole month being designated for the purpose. And whereas in 1990, President George H.W. Bush approved our joint resolution designating November National American Indian Heritage Month, and Congress chose November to celebrate Native American Heritage Month for its cultural significance as the month when Native Americans conclude their traditional harvest season. Whereas November 28, 2008, Native American Heritage Day is first celebrated as a national holiday proclaimed by U.S. President George W. Bush, and the following year, U.S. President Barack Obama signed the Native American Heritage Day Act of 2009 into law, declaring that the holiday would take place every year on the day after Thanksgiving. And whereas in 2021, President Joe Biden proclaimed the observance to function as a reminder of the historic and current inequality facing Native Americans, as well as to honor Native American veterans and service members. And whereas of 2021, there are 574 federally recognized tribes in the U.S., while many Native Americans reside on reservations, about 71% do not. And whereas the Cloverdale Rancheria of Pomo Indians includes nearly 500 members who are descendants of the indigenous people from the Cloverdale area and lived upon these lands for many centuries. And whereas the City of Cloverdale is proud to honor the history and contributions of local indigenous Americans in our community and recognizes the importance of the ancestry and traditions of indigenous Americans throughout our state and nation. And whereas November is an opportunity to grow our understanding of native culture, languages, rich traditions, and how historical traumas have impacted native peoples throughout history. And whereas the Cloverdale City Council encourages residents to visit the Cloverdale History Center and their website, cloverdalehistorysociety.org, the Sonoma Library and their website, as well as encourage all to visit nativeamericanheritagemonth.gov. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Todd Lands, Mayor, designates November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month in Cloverdale dated November 13, 2024, so ordered by the Mayor Todd Lands.
Thank you. Any comments? Tonight, we have Ursula here from the Progressive Tribal Alliance to accept this proclamation. Thank you for being here. I know we threw that on you, so thank you so much for this.
So let me tell you a little bit about Tribal Progressive Alliance. Our mission is to increase the representation of Native Americans through education, leadership, promote cultural education, while fostering a strong civic presence in our local government. So we are out there trying to reach out to many of our young, you know, Native people and kind of foster them and show them the path and let them know that there's services and resources out there for them. And on behalf of all the natives in Cloverdale Rancheria, we thank you for this proclamation. Appreciate it.
Much. Can we take a picture with you? Awesome. Okay, we will move on to F, the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Does anyone want to, excuse me, pull any items? I would like to pull F4. Is there anyone in the public that would like to pull any items? Seeing none, can I get a motion for 1 through 3?
3.
You have a second.
I second that motion.
Motion by the Vice Mayor, second by Councilmember Morganstern.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
So the reason I pulled F4 is I just wanted a quick explanation for West Yost as to where the money comes from, even though it's written in the agenda. I would just wanted it verbally on the record so that people can understand where the money comes from.
We have Rodora calling in on Zoom, and she can detail the grant funding for that.
Well, and it doesn't even need to be, you know, detailed. It's from, you know, this much from grant funding, this much is from our budget type of thing, so that we can see the difference as to this extension or the amendment. It's only, it's very small.
Yeah, so it's, can you promote her to?
Yeah, she's been promoted.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
You there, Rodora?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Hold on one second, we can't hear you yet. Could try it?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great.
Derek, you want to?
Yeah, I think mainly thereafter the breakdown of the grant funding and the budget amendment and then what the city is going to contribute to it through the Water Enterprise Funds and any details behind that.
All right. So this amendment is for the preparation of the city's recycle water feasibility study, which the city received grants from the state through its water recycling funding program and U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, Water Smart, recycle water or water reuse funding. Essentially, the state grant will cover 50% of the cost of the preparation of the feasibility study. And U.S. VR grant will cover the cost of 50%, so the two complement each other. The grants do not cover the cost of carrying the application for these grants. And so that was paid for by the state. And much of that has been paid for already, with the exception of about $10,000 that was deducted under the current task order that's being told right now. And so that's part of the amendment. And that would be paid through the Water Enterprise.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure that people knew that when they see a $327,000 amendment, that our cost is technically 17,000 because it's being paid for out of grants. So thank you so much for that. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And with that, I would make a motion for F4.
I have a quick question.
Sorry, go ahead.
I may. Suzy, so in the staff report, on the last page, you have the remaining $17,540 from the Water Enterprise Fund. Do you happen to know what the current balance is after that in the Water Enterprise Fund? Oh, okay. That'd be great. Thank you. But with that, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I made it. Would you be willing?
A second.
Okay, we got it. You can give it to Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Walter's fine. Do you want that before?
Oh, no, that's okay. But I just think that would be great if we could have a report out on what the remaining balance is. Great. Thank you.
So we can move along with the agenda, maybe do that under the City Manager/City Attorney Report at the end. All right, with that, Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into new business, H1 Resolution, appointing Kevin Thompson as City Manager effective December 21, 2024, and approving an at-will employment agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So over the last, over the summer, David Kelly, who's been serving as the City Manager for the last six years, if my math is correct, and been with the city for eight, announced they plan to leave at the end of December, December 22nd, to pursue additional opportunities. And so the city began to meet in closed session to decide what to do next. And the city is in the fortunate position of having a good bench. And I think most organizations want to strive to be able to promote from within, and that was something that was possible here because of the, you know, relationship between David and Kevin. And so recently, in closed session, the city council decided to move forward with appointing Kevin Thompson as the next City Manager effective the day after David's last day. Kevin, you all know him well, so I won't dwell on his bio at all, but I do need to go over some of the information, his contract as part of the Brown Act. So the contract is effective December 21st, and it's an at-will agreement, which means that the city council, he's not protected by normal civil service rules, and the council can decide to terminate him without cause at any time. If he is terminated without cause, he would be entitled to four months severance. The term of his agreement is for approximately three years. It goes to December 31st, but it's for three years. His base salary will be $184,000.058. And then, beginning July 1, 2025, he'll receive the same cost of living increases that the city provides to department heads. The agreement also provides that Kevin will be evaluated on a regular schedule, and the council can decide then if they want to provide any merit increases. So Kevin's vacation leave will be 200 hours per year. And I want to highlight that the staff report says that it's 160 hours. That's a typo. It should be 200 hours, which is what he is receiving now. After 15 years of service, that number will increase to 264 hours, and he'll be able to sell back 80 hours per year. After eight years, he'll get a 5% increase for longevity pay. He will continue to receive the same retirement benefits right now that the city is providing to other non-safety employees who were hired in the same time bracket as Kevin. He will continue to accrue 120 hours per year. The cap will be 2,000 hours of what he can accumulate for sick leave, and upon separation or retirement, the city will compensate him for 35% of the unused amount. He will also get 80 hours per calendar year of admin leave, and this is recognition for time that he works outside the normal 40-hour week. But because he's exempt employee, he won't be receiving overtime, so this is compensation for that. But it is not something that can be cashed out, and it cannot also be carried over. He will also get a $75 per month mobile phone allowance and some other miscellaneous benefits as specified in his employment agreement. The agreement also specifies the city right now is in the process of working on a senior staff compensation plan. And if that plan ultimately provides greater benefits than whether in the proposed agreement, the city manager will get those higher benefits. So with that, I am open to any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Alex. We'll work our way around the room. Councilmember Bagby? Vice Mayor?
Congratulations, Kevin. Yeah, we look forward to working with you. We've already had some meetings with you, and I think it's going to be a positive step. And thank you very much for stepping up. We really appreciate it, and we look forward to it.
I just want to say congratulations, and I know you'll do an excellent job.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, anytime you want to talk about anything, I'm here. But congratulations. And like I said, I'm here to work with you. So thank you.
Wow, this is super exciting. I really just can't wait. I really thank you, Mayor Lands and council members for your confidence in me. And we're going to do a great job together. I know it, and I really look forward to it. I got some big shoes to fill, but I am up for the challenge. And again, thank you so much. I look forward to 2025 when we can really hit the ground running.
Thank you for being willing to take this on. I know that it's, like you said, it's big shoes to fill, but it's also, it's a big job. Thick skin, big shoulders, you're carrying a lot here, and it's a big change. And, you know, councils aren't easy to work with. You have five different personalities that don't know what your job really is until they're in here. So I wouldn't want your job, but I am so thankful you're in it. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Really. I see some people back here smiles. I don't know if you know these people here.
My youngest daughter, Madeline.
Barely holding themselves in their seats. I think that...
Natalie and my wife Cindy.
I think that you guys need to have a great picture together right now.
Agreed. Come on up, you guys.
Yes, yes, we have to. You guys want a picture with Kevin?
No.
Counsel? Kevin, to your family, I want to tell you guys thank you so much for sharing him with us. I know it's a lot of hours. I understand. So thank you so much for the hard work that you guys put in and the sacrifice that you make.
I believe Chief wants to say something. Chief, you want to say something?
I just want to congratulate you. I've worked with you for many years now. You know, we've had many conversations about many different things. Your guidance is needed. I appreciate working with you. I'll be with you for a little bit. And, you know, I already know your family because you talk about them all the time. You got to use, you need to use the pool more often. He worked hard on that. The other thing I wanted to say is, I don't know if this is Dave's last... No? It is? No? Yeah. Oh, well, I appreciate you. And good luck to you. We're here when you need us. I have a lot of events coming up. I'll be seeing you there. And good luck.
Congratulations, Kevin.
I've only been here for a short amount of time, but both David and Kevin have taught me a lot, and they've been really great to work for, making me the transition from private to public. So I'm excited to continue to work with Kevin, and thank you for all the help, David, and hopefully have a great retirement.
Just want to piggyback on that. I know I'm sitting down here, but I'm pretty new to the city relatively, too, a few years in. One of the main reasons I came here was the people. When I got interviewed by both David and Kevin, I realized this is a place that I want to work at, and I'm really excited, one for you, David, for your next chapter, and Kevin, for yours. I think you both are going to find enjoyment in it. I think, David, you'll probably have a little more fun than Kevin. But I think Kevin's going to do a good job. And Council, I want to thank you for appointing him. I think it was a good hire, and I'm excited to work with Kevin since I share a wall, but we share a lot of ideas, too. So I'm excited to work with you going forward, and congrats.
I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to make a comment? Well, I am not sure if the microphone is on, if it's not.
I don't know if it is. I'll just yell.
Okay, perfect.
Well, congratulations, and David, definitely going to miss you a lot. And I agree, it was a good hire. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Please come forward.
I'd also like to say, Kevin, congratulations, and look forward to working with you and all the sitting council members.
Great, awesome. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Anyone like to read a resolution?
I will. Most new approved read resolution by title only, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale appointing Kevin Thompson as City Manager effective December 21, 2024, and approving an at-will employment agreement.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
First and a second?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye. Passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Okay, we will move on to H2, ordinance increasing council member compensation.
Thank you, Mayor. So currently, the Cloverdale Municipal Code establishes that the compensation for council members is $555 per month. That was established in 2016. That was the last time it was increased. And what council members can be paid is set by state law. And in the past, it was essentially you could increase 5% per year, and if you waited a few years, you could add those amounts together. Recently, the legislature and the governor signed a new law that increased the amount. And it's based on the size of the city, and for the size of Cloverdale, the maximum salary is $950 per month. So at the budget workshop in the spring, the council authorized that money to be put into the budget and to move forward with this. In order to effectuate it, it needs to be adopted by ordinance. The ordinance we introduce here and adopt at the next reading, and then it takes place once the new council comes into effect. And that's a requirement of state law. So even if this had been adopted, you know, six months ago, it wouldn't have gone into effect until the next council took effect in, you know, middle of December. So the ordinance would increase the salary to $950. It's, of course, up to the council. You know, if the council wants to do a different number, that's something that would be possible to make that change here tonight. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Alex, we'll go around, questions, comments? Seeing none on the side? No questions.
I think twice we voted on that already, so, and we also advertised it when we were looking for a new city council member, so I think I'm all on board for approving it tonight.
I want to make it clear that I am not for this raise for the council. When we're looking at deficit spending already, everyone needs to sacrifice, and then on top of that, I don't want the money to be the incentive to be here, I want your love for the community to be why people run for council. So I am against this and will be most likely voting in that direction. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I totally understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor. I've been on the City Council now for a number of years, and I think the annual or the stifling increases that we get are very important for us to attract new council members. I know there's a lot of expenses that I do not put in, reimbursement, and I think $950 is a small pittance compared to the amount of time that's put in to do your homework as a council member. So I'm going to support it this evening, I think it's well-deserved by this council in going forward by new council members, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll open it up to the public, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there anyone with any questions, comments, concerns, or want to make a motion?
This is the first reading, right?
I'll introduce the proposed ordinance by title only, just to make you happy, Alex, an ordinance amending Chapter 2.04.010, compensation for council members of the Cloverdale Municipal Code.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, we have a first and a second.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan Stern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lanz?
Nay, passes 4-1, thank you. All right, we're moving on to legislative reports, any letters of support or opposition? I haven't seen anything come through lately, is there anything, David or Kevin, Alex? Okay, great. Subcommittee reports, does anyone have anything they would like to report out? Seeing none, all agendas and minutes and media are available on our website. Council member reports, any verbal reports from anyone?
Are we on Jay?
We already passed up Jay, I just did Jay. Did you have something you wanted to add for a subcommittee? Please.
Well, I wanted to talk about the last homeless committee, subcommittee meeting we had, we had a, we had a speaker by Zoom from Ronert Park, and Kevin Thompson secured the speaker, and it was really good, he talked about how in Ronert Park they have this new thing called the hub, it's been on ABC, and the Press Democrat did an article on it, and what it is, is it's a service hub where, say, somebody's dealing with an eviction or they have to move out of their apartment, or they're homeless and they, you know, want to know where to go to get in touch with coordinated entry, they can go to this administrative building and get help, and so we talked, you know, after the presentation, which was excellent, then we had a discussion on, you know, how eventually in Cloverdale, we'd like to plant the seeds to do something more small scale, but, you know, something that would be suitable to help people in Cloverdale, like Reach for Home, Margaret, the head of Reach, the director of Reach for Home, was on the subcommittee by Zoom, and she said they need space in Cloverdale, you know, where people could see a therapist or register with coordinated entry, so we are hoping at some point that we could, you know, do a similar hub in Cloverdale where people could go to get their needs met, and it would be all-inclusive, you know, seniors could go there, anyone could go there that needs help, and hopefully we could help some people. So anyway, I just wanted to let people know about that meeting.
Great, thank you. Any comments, any further? Okay. Thank you, appreciate that. All right, moving into council member reports, any verbal reports? I'd just like to report out, both of our ballot measures are doing well at this point, but there is a lot of ballots that aren't counted yet, so nothing is confirmed at this point. Written reports are in the agenda. City manager report?
None.
City attorney?
One second, Mayor. Suzy, did you have that?
I just want to put out the amount in the Water Enterprise, it's 4.90.
Okay, council, council direction on future agenda items. I would like to bring to our next meeting a consolidated subcommittee list. As we have really worked hard with our council, working in subcommittees, there's a lot of them, and it takes a lot of our time, and it takes a lot of staff time to make agendas for every single one of these, to be posted on time and things like that. They had been broken up into multiple little groups because we needed time with, you know, with the drought that we had going on, with the different rules and Prop 47s and Martin versus Boise and things with homeless, we've really used these, and now I think we can start consolidating them again. So I'd really like to see if Kevin Thompson and Michael, if you guys could really work on this and focus, see if you can make it into two to three subcommittees that we could all have versus six to seven, and it'll take a lot off of your plate for time, so you have more time to do other things. Anyone else have anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, not a future agenda item, but I just wanted to remind my council members and city staff that this will be my last meeting, I'll be leaving tomorrow to go back to Philadelphia, I'll be returning to Cloverdale on the 6th of January in time for the next council meeting, January 8. I've, I'm going to spend the holidays with my family and go to Will's Eye Hospital, I have some appointments set up there, and so I just wanted to say I won't be here for the holidays, but you'll be in my thoughts, so, thank you.
Thank you. So that means you're missing the December 13 meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
11th.
What is it?
December 11th.
11th, okay. Go ahead.
I guess, just wanted to get confirmation from the council, that item you requested, that there was consensus for that to come back, I believe already on the agenda will be, since it's a new council discussion of items, subcommittees, but if you want it as a separate item, or if, that's okay, just discussions of subcommittees will already be on the agenda at the next meeting.
Correct, they're separate.
Got it.
Absolutely, the discussions will be there, but this will be two, so that we don't have a homeless public works, you might have one meeting versus three.
I have a question about that, are we all going to be able to have input into those?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, I just want some type of framework brought to us so that we can discuss it. Anything, is that good? Okay. Anything else? Seeing none? All right, thank you, meeting adjourned, 6:37.